Yep.
Good evening and welcome to the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of the Auburn Main Planning Board. We'll begin with roll call starting over here on my right.
Stephen Martelli.
Riley Bergeron.
Brian Dubois.
Darren Finnegan.
And I'm Chairman Matt Duval. This evening, since we have some vacancies due to people being elected to council, our one associate member, Mr. Dubois, will be, will act as a regular member. Item number two, minutes from the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Any changes, edits to the minutes? If not, I'd move by unanimous consent to accept the minutes. Fellas in favor? Thanks. All right, item number two is a, is this a public hearing?
No, it's not.
It's not, okay. Is a discussion of a proposed amendment to the phosphorus ordinance, which is section sixty dash one zero seven zero. Staff?
I think John had given you an overview at the last meeting. If you have any questions about it, we're happy to answer those. Otherwise, basically wanted to make sure you're aware that we'll plan on having that as a public hearing at the next meeting in February. And it's really updating the standards to match the current DEP standard. Whereas the standard we have from May of nineteen ninety is no longer even available on the DEP website. So people have to ask us for it, and it's just not current practice.
Yep. Okay, great. Comments? Questions from the board? People ready for a public hearing on this? Okay.
Great. We'll schedule it.
Great, thank you. All right, now moving on to item number four, the first of three items, workshop items related to the future land use map. This one is related to a zoning update in the Gracelawn area. Changing one hundred and forty-eight acres from the agricultural and resource protection zone to commercial development district. Staff?
Yeah, all of the items on the agenda for tonight are just that workshop items. We figured the easiest way to kind of go through it was to use the presentation that we used with the council that's been updated slightly for you. So you'll see the work that you did in two thousand and twenty here on the screen. We expanded the form-based code area to encourage traditional infill. Increased flexibility for secondary dwelling units. Density downtown and urban residential core. A lot of our form-based code updates have furthered that goal and really starts to give, give a place for people to expand residential opportunities without putting pressure on rural areas. One of the goals of the comp plan. Expand density where infrastructure exists. You've done a lot of that work in two thousand and twenty by expanding the form-based code. And the adoption of the comprehensive plan that happened in December is going to allow for more, a lot more of that to happen in the coming year, so.
Great. So just before you continue, is this presentation going to cover the three, next three items on the agenda?
Yes, it will.
Okay, if so, do we need a point of, I don't know, it's not point of order, but just note for the record that we will discuss items four, five, and six on the agenda as one item. We'll, we'll do them sequentially, but we'll hear from staff and then we'll work through each of them without going back to staff, so, thanks.
Okay, so go through all three and then we'll go back.
I think we go through all three and then come back, yep.
Great.
Here's a summary of the three. One thing we do want to note in the packet. You got a copy of the presentation that was used for the council before it was updated, so there was a fourth bullet point here. That fourth bullet point was updating subsurface wastewater standards in the Lake Auburn watershed. The council prioritized these three, and then at a later time, we'll get into that subsurface wastewater after we get these on their way and in the public discussion process. The first one on the agenda, number four, zoning update to the Gracelawn area. Our two thousand and ten comp plan called for a significant portion of this land to become general development or commercial development district. We've since received the Lake Auburn watershed study. That study analyzed the boundaries of the watershed based on topography, and it also analyzed a lot of groundwater monitoring data that we had from the landfill, the Auburn landfill, as well as the gravel pits that exist out there, and they've better defined that boundary of where both the surface water, surface water drains internally towards the pit, and where the groundwater, based on the monitoring wells, moves away from the lake. So the goal of this is to take a look at those boundaries and implement the recommendations of the two thousand and ten comp plan, but also the updated recommendations of the two thousand and twenty-one comp plan that are consistent with the, with each other, with the exception that the new information gives us a better line for exactly where that boundary is and allows for a larger area to be shown as outside of the Lake Auburn watershed. So this proposal really has two parts. The first is to update the boundaries of the zoning layer, that is the Lake Auburn watershed, and the second part of it is actually to change the underlying zoning that's currently agricultural, allows for gravel mining, but update that to be this commercial development district that would allow for the reuse of that land. As the mining value is removed from the property, the site can be re-graded and put to some longer-term use rather than sitting there as a gravel pit that no longer has, has gravel in it. The idea is to have this as a commercial mixed-use district that would allow for low and high residential density uses, so multifamilies, single families, condos, as well as retail uses, business services, much like our general business zoning district, but potentially with different setback requirements or more of a form-based code style of regulation instead of the traditional general business district zoning. The area that's shown here on the left shows the current zoning and current watershed boundary. The current zoning over the parcel, yeah, you can see the cursor up there. Current zoning of this entire area is ag resource protection. The current watershed boundary, as we have had it drawn for decades, is this blue line. Comes down to Gracelawn Road into the Ball Field slightly and follows Gracelawn Road. Most of our watershed boundaries are based purely on topography, the way that they were drawn decades ago, because we really don't, in most cases, we don't have any information about how groundwater moves differently than topography. So a lake watershed is the area where either the surface water or the groundwater moves towards the lake and ultimately ends up in the lake. In this case, we know because of the extensive groundwater monitoring, as well as the topography, which has changed over time with the mining, that the, anything to the south of this blue line really doesn't drain towards Lake Auburn. There are a couple of pieces that are slightly outside of that boundary. We are proposing to follow that parcel boundary here and here. The ultimate gravel mining plans suggest that that area will be mined. If it is not mined and the topography is not changed to drain, drain internally, then that area would remain subject to the Lake Auburn watershed standards as far as phosphorus control. But we do expect that that topography will be altered so that it drains internally. And we're proposing that in those cases that we follow the parcel lines. Generally, zoning does aim to follow parcel lines. I think that could go either way on those, but I feel confident that we could either, A, make sure that any development in this area follows the Lake Auburn watershed standards, or that the development actually alters the topography to ensure that it drains internally to the pit and not, not towards the lake.
I can just add a little bit to that, you know, the section that's outside the watershed there along the roadway. Mount Auburn Ave, and then it ties in, and then it's beyond what the watershed's being shown. We originally shown that because there's entrances there and there's site distance issues to that lot. So it made sense for us to extend that commercial development district beyond the watershed into that, into that area. I think that's important to note for the planning board in terms of development and safety. I think that's a talking point and the reason why we landed there in the revised comp plan.
Because of sight lines?
Yeah, sight distance between, because the roadway where Mount Auburn Ave comes in, if you had pushed that entrance over, you've got a different intersection there. There's not enough sight distance between the entrance of the, the new, the proposed development, if there was to be a development there.
Because there's a gate entrance right now.
Yep.
Are we saying that, that gate entrance would need to be moved?
It would not need to be moved with the current layout that we currently have.
But if we go with the, if we go with the watershed boundary, it'd have to be moved?
Yes.
Correct. Now, is this the same piece of property that Roland Miller wanted to build an amusement park on?
Yes.
Yep. What makes the difference between then and now for building?
So in order to do that amusement park, most likely the zoning would have had to have been changed in some way that's similar to this. Unless it was looked at as an outdoor recreational use, then maybe it could have been done under the agricultural zoning. But I know that Roland was a significant participant in the two thousand and ten comp plan. And we had already called for a significant portion of that, not going all the way to a mapped watershed boundary, but I think it was a thousand feet from the roadway to become this business district, based on that plan.
The parcel has, has two sections. One's a mining section, the other one's an old landfill. What does the landfill do to future use on this lot?
So the, the landfill's potential future use is really limited. Nothing that disturbs the surface of the ground or extends into the surface of the ground. There's a water impervious membrane below a foot or two of soil, and nothing can be placed there that would, that would compromise that, so. I don't know if it would be possible to maybe do parking over a portion of it, but there's no proposal currently to do anything for, for development on the landfill portion. But we do know, and fortunately, I think we were incredibly lucky because we didn't have groundwater information when that landfill was created. Fortunately, the groundwater crests essentially a rim of ledge in this area.
Really?
And that's what maintains the water level of the lake, and everything on the other side of that, that rim of ledge drains away from, away from the lake.
Who knew?
And this is the, from the groundwater monitoring, a detail of, of how the wells have shown the water moves underground within that area. They've used dyes and other techniques to dye certain wells and identify where, which direction it shows up in from, from that well. And then this map on the right is showing that same red circle you see on the map on the left, just as a matter of being able to look at the, the proposed watershed boundary and compare your location. We can have that overlaid on the map to the left, so it's easier to see it all in one place. But FB Environmental's watershed scientists interpreted that map on the left and the topography, looking at both of those features, as being this blue line here as the watershed boundary. So that, we believe it makes a lot of sense not to have that land sit idle. It's close to utilities, close to services. It can be changed because the water doesn't drain towards the lake, I think, without any impact to Lake Auburn. As far as modeling goes, it actually removes a significant phosphorus input to the lake from the model. All of the models that we've seen in the past done by, mostly by the, either the Auburn Water District or the Watershed Protection Commission, assumed the boundary of the Lake Auburn watershed as we had it mapped, and then they input land use categories into each of the parcels. Having a gravel mining operation inside that watershed as part of the model actually added phosphorus to the model. This removes that, I think accurately removes it because it doesn't feed towards the lake and better reflects the true drainage patterns of that, that area, and creates an opportunity, a significant opportunity for additional development without impacting the Lake Auburn watershed.
Eric, there's a, what appears to be a substantial power line through there. How does that impact future use?
Yeah, it's pretty precarious looking. When you look over the hill and see that power line, they've essentially mined all the way around the mounds that contain the poles, and some of them are leaning a bit, and that will have to be maintained or relocated by the developer of each of the parcels within there. I suspect that it'll be maintained and reestablished in a more modern construction on more stable ground. Those mounds will likely go away, and the, the lines will likely be placed on new poles that follow the topography as it will be after, after the development. There'll be a lot of leveling that goes on prior to development to fill in some of the lowest areas and knock down some of those mounds, the higher areas, to create a more usable site, but to maintain its internal drainage so everything stays, stays inside. But I don't think that power line can go away. I think it'll, it'll have to be maintained, probably at the, the developer's expense. This was, was one of the, I think, really more, more forward-thinking and exciting opportunities that the comp plan committee discussed. Unfortunately, I think it's going to take a fair amount of time before we can implement it fully. But changing our southern gateway from the Turnpike inbound on Washington Street North to a more attractive gateway has been something that we've talked about for, for decades. I think it's, it's embarrassing really to take somebody from out of town off the Turnpike and have that be the first thing that, that people see. And it's been one of the city's goals for years. I don't think we've had a good game plan on how to address that. There's a lot of older existing grandfathered uses in that corridor that just don't present well to, to the, the roadway. This, I think, is a great idea. It's a big, big idea. But when Washington Street southbound was constructed and the right-of-way was acquired, they acquired a three-hundred-foot-wide swath of land that is similar to the width of the right-of-way for the main Turnpike. It was intended to have both directions of high-speed traffic moved over into that right-of-way. The southbound leg was constructed, the northbound leg was never constructed, and we ended up continuing to use Washington Street North for both a mobility corridor to move all the traffic from the Turnpike to downtown, but to also try to make it work for all the residences and businesses and closely spaced curb cuts, and it's a really challenging corridor to make, make it work for both functions. High-speed transport of vehicles and for people to live and work and, and turn in and out of driveways. This recommendation, much of it hinges on a major transportation upgrade that moves the northbound high-speed traffic over to the southbound leg, whether that's in a newly constructed parallel roadway or in a two-direction roadway similar to what exists today. But having both directions of traffic on that side and then allowing us to really slow down the speed on the north, the currently northbound lane, make that two-way once again, and make it a local road essentially that has zoning that would encourage people to build up closer to the street, a mix of residential and commercial uses, and really a walkable main street of sorts over the long term. I think we have a long ways to go for that. We really can't fully implement the zoning with a requirement for buildings to be built close to the street until we can deal with the traffic speeds. Currently, if you built in the way that we would expect the main street to potentially be developed, you may have problems with the plows swinging back snow at a high speed, hitting the buildings, that kind of thing. But I do think there's a real opportunity to develop the, the district standards and apply it to the section of Washington Street and Minut Avenue, the in-town sections where the speeds are slower, where it transitions to thirty-five miles an hour, and maybe even a little bit further out as you approach that. I think there's a real opportunity to sort of set the standard, the urban standard, apply it in town, and then over time, we look at extending it out the, the remainder of Washington Street. I mentioned this would be form-based code. That was laid out in the comprehensive plan, and it may be similar to one of our in-town form-based codes, but I think there'll be a wider variety of uses to maintain conformity of the, the mix of uses that are out there, with the exception possibly of like junkyards, that kind of thing, that are already non-conforming in some of those, some of those districts. The in-town area, Minut Avenue here, I think is an easy one. I think we could work our way out to somewhere in this area, maybe out to this narrows where, approximately where the speed limit changes, and apply those standards from there in town. But I think it'd be a challenge to apply those further out at this point, unless there was some exception for setbacks initially, while vehicle speeds are still fifty miles an hour.
There, there's a couple of things going on there, right, with the gateway, but also conversations around what has been referred to as the rotary around Roy's. But one doesn't need to be delayed for the other. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I think that we can implement this at least on the in-town portion from Union Street, Court Street, Minut Avenue, all the way out beyond Roy's. I don't see any reason why we can't go beyond that, and we'd have to pick a, a good stopping point, but possibly this narrow point. Or it could be implemented with some exception to the front setbacks for those higher-speed segments of the roadway, so that if somebody wanted to build in the way we envision long-term, they could, but maybe not mandated until we get those speeds down a bit. And all of that development really would be focused on Washington Street North because most of Washington Street South is all a controlled, controlled access highway. So there's no ability to create new drive openings, which is, which is why we could safely move all that traffic to that right-of-way and, and not have all these turning movements that cause the problems on, on Washington Street North.
Would you consider the gateway two-way traffic southbound, well, I guess it's the current southbound to be converted to two-way, would you consider that a shovel-ready project?
No, I wouldn't say shovel-ready. I think we need, we need to understand how traffic would move between north and southbound. Take a look at the, the traffic numbers and really have a traffic engineer look at Washington Street southbound to see if there's enough existing pavement width to have a safe two-way travel, or if it needs to be widened, or if it needs to be a divided highway that's truly, you know, two double lanes in each direction.
Like I said, I guess that's what I mean by shovel-ready. If that, if that road was designed for Turnpike level traffic, but it just never got there for reasons I don't understand why, I would think that if you've got the space, I mean, what you really need is money to, I mean, it, it's ready, it's, it can handle the, the flow and...
So the, the right-of-way was acquired to handle that level of flow. But my understanding is they only built the lanes for movement in one direction. So while the right-of-way, the land is there to do it, we need to understand if it can be done in the existing paved area or if it needs to basically double the width of the existing pavement and provide a median of some kind or that. We, we don't have the specifics on the engineering, but I do think that a great next step would be to find a way to fund that, that review by a traffic engineer, so we can start to move that.
There's also that spot where there's the bridge, right, on the southbound section, so the width of that?
Yep.
Is the maximum width that's available right now without having to...
Either construct a new bridge parallel to it or, or, or adjust that bridge, yeah. That's, those are the things that I think we need to understand to know what type of costs we're, we're talking.
And that, that whole strip was designed for that purpose how long ago?
In the fifties, I think, is when most of the right-of-way acquisition happened. And it, it will, it's the same right-of-way width as, as was acquired for the main Turnpike. It was intended to be a, a Turnpike spur or bypass. I think there's potentially, it's an important mobility corridor. The whole Route Four corridor is important at the state level and even as part of the federal system. If we could understand the costs better as we try to look at how to implement the goals laid out in this plan, I think there's the potential to have partnerships with Main Turnpike Authority. We've talked to them about this in, this in the past, Federal Highway and Main DOT, to try to find a, a way to fund that project. That would both improve mobility but also improve the gateway to the city.
It's, it's amazing that that's been kind of on the backburner since the fifties to me.
Yeah, it seems it should have been kept as a priority.
Yeah.
After they spent the money to acquire the right-of-way and all the access rights from every property owner along that corridor.
Agreed.
So the next one, I think John's gonna run with this.
I'll cover the last one. So the last one is basically, we're going to take the, the core that is urban residential land and that is own, urban residential, and then essentially that's going to be proposed as traditional neighborhood development district. Essentially, that's sixteen hundred and eighty-seven acres that we're looking to switch over there. And just a few talking points. I think this one makes sense, you know, from developing from the core of the city outward. I think that's what our comp plan, our revised comp plan was really shooting for. This makes a lot of sense, existing sewer, existing water locations, higher densities in these locations. A couple other points is that as we were driving around the city, I don't know the city that well, so I like to, like to cruise around the city once in a while to kind of learn this stuff. A lot of the, a lot of the existing homes are really, they're, they're non-conforming. And I would say about seventy percent of the homes and their lots are non-conforming. And there's a couple of onesie-twosie neighborhoods that we could look at and say, okay, these are, these are obviously newer developments, newer construction types, and they're, you know, further back from the road. But if you look at the core of this area, it's really, it's up close, less than twenty-five feet. A lot of the lots are, are small, and this allows for those lots now to be conforming. So if we look at any of the traditional form-based code, I think this would mirror something very close to four-point-two in terms of traditional zoning that we currently have. It would allow for a lot of infill development. I'm getting calls already, people hearing about the, this communication at, at the council level already calling that they have parcels available, and that, you know, they, they think, they see that there's, there could be value... know, they think, they see that there's, there could be value in their lot all of a sudden. So that's kind of interesting. Again, we're allowing for new housing opportunities, providing more conformance with our, with new zoning or former zoning really, or former building, the way that we built our cities, say, in the 50s or the 60s prior to zoning. This really allows for that to become conforming.
I don't really have much more to say, other than the fact that I think this allows a lot of flexibility in the areas that make sense in the city.
Great. Thank you. Any, since we're dealing with all these three, and people have been asking questions, but anybody have further questions for staff or thoughts on any of these particular items?
Have any of the definitions changed, like home occupations or small office and mixed-use buildings? Anything that we should be aware of that might change the scope along with this plan? Home occupations, has that list expanded or contracted based on a new definition?
I don't see it changing home occupations. It might almost make it unnecessary to use the home occupation process in a lot of that area because one of the, one of the comp plan goals, and it was discussed a lot as part of the comp plan group, was to potentially have the neighborhood pizza shop or the neighborhood coffee shop or the home office, like Za Pizza Market on Park and Lake, to be able to have those types of businesses at certain parts of the neighborhood, like nodes where they intersect with a primary road through the neighborhood with a side street on those corner lots and things like that, and really try to be able to, I guess, one, allow somebody to have a small business out of their home, but also, two, to really give somebody that lives there a reason to walk in the neighborhood and be able to have a destination for a cup of coffee or a convenience store or sandwich or whatever. So I don't see it changing home occupations, but it does add to what is allowed as far as small offices or mixed-use buildings that would have a commercial aspect and a residential aspect.
I think to be more prepared for the next meeting, Brian, I think it brings up a great point that we should look at that form-based code list. And the list is very specific and prescriptive of what is allowed and not allowed, and really take a close look at the items that we identify as allowed use in those spaces. And it does really reflect a lot of what, you know, what Eric was talking about in terms of having a mixed use of businesses and residential homes in those areas. So we'll identify that list in the new slides as we present for the public workshop. I think that's a great idea in terms of more information.
Yeah, it'd be appreciated. Thank you. And there was discussion about how do we, how do we define the commercial uses so they don't become a dominant aspect of the neighborhoods as well. And you can see on this, which was text taken from the comp plan, that some comparison to the average size of homes or lots in the neighborhood would be used as a limitation for the size of a commercial operation. So we'll have to define that in more detail in the ordinance, but it would add some flexibility for mixed use or small commercial uses.
Going back about three years ago, we had a Court Street study of business from the, basically from the bridge to Union Bypass. Has that been considered in with this or is that something separate still?
So that study doesn't extend as far up Court Street as this discussion, but we are working, John's been working with the traffic engineer that we've hired to actually design the physical construction elements of that study, and they're working on that. So that is, has not been lost and it is still being implemented.
Right.
Yeah, so Steve, the goal really is to, you know, we gotta slow traffic down on Court Street, period.
Right.
That way there, we can get, you know, more commercial development, more people walking the downtown, feeling comfortable doing that. You know, my office window is right there, right off Court Street, and they just, it's amazing how quick they go from Lewiston to Auburn. And it really is a goal of mine. It's, I'm gonna tell you that it's challenging. So they use the term road diet, right, so minimizing a lane essentially. And that really creates, we know that from the study, from coming from Lewiston, that's really not an option. They're worried about stacking in another city that we can't control. So we're really kind of concentrated that on our side. And we're really challenged with stacking and timing of the lights and creating additional issues for traffic. So we're starting to get creative in terms of, you know, traffic design standards where we're really looking to maybe elevate crosswalks, maybe even potentially elevating intersections because the goal, at the end of the day, the goal is to have large flashing beacons, those kinds of things. The goal is to slow, somehow slow traffic down, right, to make the community more walkable. So that's, that's been my, one of my jobs here since I've been here, since I got here, looking for a creative way to get it done. We're about, we're about a little over halfway through the design right now. We will be updating the council soon, so it is something we're working on.
You know, they say you don't build a church for just Easter Sunday, but on commuter times, I mean, the New Auburn Bridge and the Court Street Bridge, I don't know what we call that these days, but they're absurd for this area anyway. Is there talk about another option geographically? I mean, is there another bridge that could be built?
So not necessarily a bridge, but that, a new bridge in particular, but the goal, part of the goal is that we create enough obstacles and slow the traffic down enough that people start thinking about other ways to get from point A to point B because it's slow, because it's cumbersome. It's kind of a balancing act, you know, commerce has to go. We understand that. It's part of a DOT urban compact area, so there's complexities of that. We don't have sole ownership. The city doesn't have necessarily the only say in the matter. We've got, you know, we've got to answer to a DOT traffic engineer, chief traffic engineer, that kind of plays a part into this. And then at the same time, commerce still has to happen, right? People have to get from point A to point B. So there's, we're hoping that we do it in such a way that we slow the traffic down, we give the people an idea there may be a quicker way to get there and utilize other ways. So the traffic numbers go down, slows the traffic down. Again, the end state is to make it pedestrian-friendly, commercial-friendly to the downtown. We look at trips per hour, peak trips per hour across the state. Coming from my level, being a state planner for a long time, looking at state data, that's, it's got the highest trips per hour and one of some of the highest trips per hour compared to any other portion of the state. So you say, well, why can't, why can't the city, we want to, as a city, we want to capitalize on that traffic to commerce in our city. But the fact of the matter is they're going too fast. They're going someplace else. We gotta get them a way to, we gotta, give them, figure out a way to get them to stop and then make it feel that people can stop. So right now, I don't think they have that feeling. They just have the feeling to go, like when you're on the turnpike.
There is an opportunity long-term too with an additional turnpike exit, and that was one of the major goals identified in the comp plan, is that an exit in Auburn could actually really allow us to incorporate that bridge into our local transportation network. So people coming in on 196 from Lisbon, a lot of the people crossing the New Auburn Bridge or this bridge came in from that direction, and a turnpike exit in Auburn would give that, give them another alternative. There's also a lot of people coming down 202 through Lewiston that passed the north bridge, that could have come on to Center Street and come down. But they chose this because it was faster. If this was a little bit slower, some of those cars would choose that northern bridge instead and begin to move some of that traffic out of the system. But the engineers really won't make drastic assumptions about that movement. So I think what John and the engineer's been working on are what can we do between now and some future end state where traffic is going slower to slow cars down and see how many people do respond by changing their routes.
In the near term, though, the only real option is that north bridge?
Yeah, yeah. That's, a lot of the traffic passing through here either passes that north bridge afterwards or passed it on the way in. But the bulk of that traffic in the study, more than half, was local people traveling within the Lewiston and Auburn downtowns. So it's not a, you know, you could move fifty percent of the traffic to that bridge. It's some percentage, but...
Some small percentage.
Yeah, not, not the majority of traffic, but there is a significant amount of it that passes.
Yep.
Both bridges.
You know, as a local realtor, I use that northern bridge all the time to avoid the congestion down here. And even though I'm traveling more miles, it's significantly effective for my, for my time.
Yep.
I wish more people used it.
And even if you were headed from, you know, that, somewhere in the Russell Street, East Ave area, if there was an Auburn exit on the turnpike, you might use the turnpike to cross the river and avoid, avoid that for a big part of Auburn.
There's some talk about another tier to the bridge down here?
Not aware of a tier, maybe a walkway on the Lewiston side, similar to our River Walk?
I thought there was some talk about the bridge actually being elevated.
I haven't heard that.
So when you came down, like north, north of the courthouse, it would be elevated like you had over the Center Street for the north bridge.
Huh.
Just tie into...
So a longer bridge that comes into the hillside?
Tie into more of the slope up by the Hopeful Sign in Lewiston.
If we did that over here too, we could all walk under the traffic essentially.
Right. Yeah, they have that in Bangor too.
I don't know how that would work with the existing buildings down here, but that's an interesting idea. We've talked about, could we elevate a pedestrian bridge to move pedestrians across Court Street without being at the same level as the traffic? I hadn't heard about the roadway idea.
Then I'd like to propose that and take credit for the idea.
So I have a question about Grace Lawn. Eric, you said that some of the Grace Lawn stuff is actually, a big chunk of that is in the 2010 FLU, not the 2021. Is that right?
So this area that's shaded without the crosshatching?
Yep.
From there to the road, that was already recommended in the 2010 comp plan.
Got it.
A solid color.
And it continues to be recommended in the 2021?
Correct.
And then because of the Lake Auburn watershed study, we're adding the crosshatched area?
Correct.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you. And then just a question about the Washington Ave bit. So as we think about, okay, what's our, what are our actions? What action does the planning board take? Would we zone all of this now or, like, because you're thinking not all of it can be implemented now, which I totally agree with. We can't have the NASCAR track businesses right up next to the NASCAR track that is Washington Avenue.
So, yeah, I think we could, we could draft the zoning standards and then figure out a logical boundary. I think somewhere around here...
Right where it splits.
Yeah, around where it splits.
Where that U-turn is.
And there's, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the road now, the Crystal Springs.
Yeah, the bottom of that little valley there.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we do have a proposal...
Brick Road, Brick?
Brick, yeah.
Brickyard Circle, yes, sir. We do have a proposal for residential development in this area that's proposed to change from industrial to this new mixed-use district that could happen with access off of Brickyard Circle, either as the current general business, if the boundary was moved to include that one parcel of industrial, or as this form-based code district. But I think that area is where, where the transition really starts to happen from the high speed to the lower speed.
So with that development, would there be access into those streets off of Poland Road?
No, no, there wouldn't be.
So there's no connectivity?
No connectivity that we've heard of. It's something we could ask about, but there's, there's also Taylor Brook that kind of separates part of that. We'd have to look at how that works. There's a fair amount of floodplain that I think they'd have to cross.
Well, just if we're continuing to think about walkability, that would be huge, even just to have a walking route that connects that neighborhood with this development district. I think developing those sorts of things would be...
Even a pedestrian connection?
Yeah, or pedestrian slash multi-use, you know, little path.
Along those lines, I think something to keep in mind too is we do have, the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company gave the City of Auburn the railroad right-of-way along the Little Anders Skoggin that essentially brings you down the other side of Washington Street to that area. So I think there's the potential long-term, the big obstacle being Washington Street. If we could get pedestrians up and over Washington Street, that whole Poland Road neighborhood could have pedestrian connectivity to our River Walk.
And then you have connectivity, yeah, to the River Walk, exactly.
Yeah, and throughout the downtown really at that point.
Yeah, and that would be, I like the sound of that.
That's, the Lewiston Auburn Railroad gave that right-of-way to the city a little over a year ago, I think it was now. And we are working with the Lewiston Auburn Railroad. I know they've spoken with the mayor, and we, I think John and I have a meeting with an engineer tomorrow just to start to understand what the scale of those costs would be. And we do expect that there will be a lot of federal funding available for projects that connect people in neighborhoods and downtowns and give people the ability to recreate outdoors. So we're trying to see if that could be a shovel-ready project.
And would that actually connect out to the proposed Casco Bay Trail, rail trail?
I don't know. Our right-of-way is limited to about that point, I think, right now, but hopefully someday we could continue to fill in gaps and...
Right.
Make those connections.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Access from Poland Road to the River Walk?
It's a long ways. It's hard to envision that, but if you look at Poland Road here, we have all these neighborhoods that Chairman Duval was mentioning. And then there is a stream crossing that would have to occur on Taylor Brook. But if, you know, there's a potential development here, Brickyard Circle here, the Lewiston Auburn Railroad that the city now owns actually connects to Main Street, goes under Main Street through the park and follows the edge of the Little Anders Skoggin River right out to that point where it crosses Taylor Brook. So, you know, the gaps start to get pretty small for connecting all the way to Poland Road if we were able to get to that point. It's, the big obstacle is really, we can't stripe a crosswalk on Washington Street and tell people to go more. I think there would have to be either some way to go under, some way to go over the traffic.
A bridge or a tunnel. And it's not, but it's not far. Like, it feels far, it's actually not far. It's maybe a half mile.
As the zoning changes, you know, we go to a more form-based code and we slow the traffic down up on the top end of this piece as we're talking about, some of this stuff becomes more attainable. You can really start seeing it, how it would come together at that point.
Agreed. Yep.
So that spur, is that, is that going side by side to the active rail bit?
Pretty close. It crosses under the active line at one point, but it's pretty close to parallel. There's some separation at points, but you can see one line from the other through a lot of it.
Yeah.
Is that the one that continues right into the pedestrian bridge over here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, goes under... Yes, yeah, goes under, underneath Main Street.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, that's the, the exact line, it really, we walked it with, Jonathan Labonte is the president of LA Railroad, John and I walked that section of track with him a month or so ago. A lot of it is, you know, basic clearing of an old railroad bed and then bringing in material as a surface, but the tracks are still in place, and then there's other sections of it that have been used for maintenance access to the active line that you could ride a mountain bike on right now and, you know, stay between the tracks, and it's in, in mowed condition, essentially.
That's the old Grand Trunk Line.
Sure.
And it's not...
Can we do a field trip and drive one of those?
Yep.
Little hand carts?
Love to, you'll have to cut a lot of trees on sections of it.
Oh, really?
Mostly six inches or smaller, but you'd have to cut some trees. We could certainly walk it, though, if you wanted to.
And get you right to Rails, or whatever it's called now, it's not Rails anymore, what's it, that restaurant, the train station right there?
Yeah, yeah, the old Rails, I don't remember what the name of it is now.
Yeah, the station, I think it is.
The station, yeah.
And the tracks, that, that set of tracks still cross Washington, from what I understand, they're, they're under the pavement, you can hear them when you cross that section of Washington, if you know where to listen for them.
You know, I, I think of it as, if, if the trail's there, you're on, if you're on a bike, it's, you're downtown in 10 minutes.
Well, yeah, I mean, I...
It's quick.
I struggle with east-west crossing on my bike, east-west across town, it's just not, it's not fun, and that would make it much better.
That would be a great, a great alternative, and I think even, if you can get to Poland Road, then you can get to Fairview, you can get back up to Court Street, it really could connect a lot of the city...
Yep.
To the downtown.
Yep.
That's cool.
And then, just one quick question about the, so the Court Street area, the urban residential, or to the traditional downtown, that's form-based code, between that boundary and the one we're just talking about, it's form-based code, right? That green, yeah.
Yes.
That green.
That's all, the, the form-based code we did last year.
Yep, that's T42.
Yep.
Traditional downtown, traditional neighborhood or traditional...
So you essentially are getting just an expansion of T42?
That's correct.
When we were driving around and thinking about the, and we can show some examples, we don't have a good data layer that has setbacks of buildings quantified, but when we were driving around, I was surprised, actually, that there is a much higher percentage of the neighborhoods within that area that have a good portion of the homes that are closer than 25 feet, and it really is the traditional, traditional pattern to build like that, and then there's a few sort of outliers, but they're the newer neighborhoods that were, were forced to build 25 feet or more back by our zoning over the last 30 years or so. It would bring a lot of the traditional neighborhoods back into conformance with the zoning and allow for future development to conform, conform with that.
Anymore for staff? So, when you want to have public hearing on this, would you do them sequentially? How would you, two in one meeting, or all at one meeting? How, what?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't, I don't expect a lot of participation, I guess, from the public necessarily on the first two, but we're talking about 1,600 acres in the urban core for this one. I think that there's likely to be a lot of public participation, so we could either try to separate them by times during the evening, in one evening, or we could split them into two separate meetings, but I do think that, trying to put all three of them into one meeting is probably going to bring too many people to City Hall, given the current status with COVID and everything, so...
Yep.
We wanted to talk about how to do that. We could either have a meeting that is split into two pieces with specific notice of times, and probably have a downtime in between the two of 20, 30 minutes, something like that, or we could schedule them for two different evenings, but we're open, open either way.
Okay. Any thoughts on that from the board?
We're talking about two different meetings in the same, we're not going to wait two different months.
We really don't want to, so we were thinking either trying to do...
Like a Tuesday, Thursday, or consecutive Tuesdays or something?
Yeah, or, or Tuesday, and we do a public hearing on the ones that we don't expect to, that, that we send a lot fewer notices to. This one, we're going to send a lot of notices out. We could do a 6 to 7 o'clock on the other two, and a 7 o'clock notice for this one, if we wanted, you know, however we wanted to break that out, or maybe start a half-hour early and do 5:30 to 7 on the other two, and then 7 o'clock on this one, if it's easier. I don't know what's better for the board, two nights or, or a little bit longer meeting.
So, I think we'd be fine to, personally, to do it in a single meeting, or at least try, if, you know, if it runs long, we can always table it.
Yep. Would you be open to starting a little bit early that night, or is it better to start at 6 for everybody's work schedules?
It's better for my, personally for me, to start at 6, I don't know about others.
I, I can make it flexible.
Well, we'll plan on 6, and we could, we'll, we'll make sure it's clear in the notice of the order of the agenda items, and we, we can set a start time for the, for this larger one as the second half of the meeting.
That sounds right to me.
Do you want to do the larger one first?
What kind of pushback are we anticipating?
I don't know of any specific pushback, we've had a lot of people interested in, some people that already own property, one in particular that John was working with that rehabbed a house, was getting ready to sell it, found out about this, now he wants to hold the house and see if he can build a second house next door before he sells the, the first house, and the current zoning doesn't allow it. So, I think there are a lot of people that are anticipating this change. I just know that we'll be sending out notices to, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 people, and if even 10% show up, you know, we could have, we could have 100 people here, so.
That's a lot of people. Okay, anything else? Okay, I'm going to call for a quick recess.
It was back.
So when you're in access... I use the... layers, let's see. A little bit of that, it's the plant... I think it's green, it's green. Underline clients.
Over in New York. Been there. It's, yeah, exactly, pass. I don't know, mine's just getting more feisty.
Okay, so, we arrive now at item number eight on the agenda, public comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to address the board, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to item nine, planning board items for discussion. So, you, do you have an update on the proposed state statute?
So, the, it hasn't become an LD yet, it's still considered an LR, I guess, a proposal, but we do expect to hear more on that soon, and that, I think you're referring to the one with specifically about agricultural homesteads.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're, we're expecting to learn more about what makes it into a final LD, and then we'll be certainly looking to have a discussion with planning board and council. We are going to talk to the council about whether or not it, they would like to have a committee of people work together, what we're suggesting most likely is member from the Conservation Commission, a member from the Ag Commission, and a member from the Forestry Commission, which is a subset of the Conservation Commission, two planning board members and two counselors. So, a committee of seven people to work on, looking at how that interacts with our ordinances and how we might make adjustments if there are areas that we want to try to, try to conserve still, or, or limit development on. The other thing is the Housing Commission that was created last fall has provided their final report to the Legislative Committee on Housing and Labor, so I think we'll be seeing some other housing-related legislation come out of that. Some of the goals of our comp plan already set us up well to possibly take advantage of that process by advocating for things that accomplish what we've already laid out in the comp plan, but we'll be working with you and with the council on those things. And I think the, the council's really going to have to take a, a formal position on some of those bills to tell us how to participate in that, in that process.
Got it, okay. And then, I just, looking at the phosphorus standards, because it has that small 575-square-foot threshold, made me think of the tiny home and addressing that gap, are we gonna, do we have plans to take that up at some point in the future?
We, we do, I think what's been happening is we've been given enough priorities from the council that we haven't been able to choose to get back to that one, but we do need to address that.
Yeah.
So we won't let that drop off the radar, won't be ready for February, but we'll, we'll try to get it on an agenda.
Well, it sounds like we just filled February. Anything else from the board? No, we're moving on to item 10, upcoming items for February. What do we got, aside from these three public hearings?
We don't, I don't believe we have any projects for February, I think they have until the end of this week to submit for that meeting. We do have a couple of projects, there's a bank building on the corner of Cross Street and Center Street, we received an application for that, Five Guys wants to occupy that building without a drive-through, and then they've talked about potentially coming back to the board for a drive-through approval at some time in the future, but initially to occupy that building as just a, a sit-down restaurant with also takeout, like they do at a lot of their other stores. PacGen is a business that has been located in Auburn for around 20 years, a little longer than 20 years, I think, on First Flight Drive. The owner of that business shares the building with his brother, who also operates a business, both businesses have been doing well, so PacGen has purchased the Auburn Business Development Corporation subdivision Cascades Drive, this happened last year, they're ready to propose a building, but where it's in the approved industrial-commercial subdivision. I think that one will be a staff-level review, but it'll be a, a development of one of the We also received a similar, a proposal that's very similar to that, in the Harriman Business Park off of Kitty Hawk, Agron Appliance has really had to adjust their business model because of the pandemic and the availability of appliances, so they, they have to store a lot more appliances for longer periods of time. If you ordered a full set of appliances for your house, they might get the washer and the stove and not the dishwasher and the dryer, and they, instead of being able to count on a delivery on Thursday to send to the customer on Friday, they have to hold pieces of it longer term and they need some more warehouse space, so they're proposing a warehouse building over there. Those are the big ones right now, and they're, they're significant, I think there is a lot happening, just happens to be in the approved industrial-commercial subdivisions right now.
Got it. Great, thank you. That brings us to item 11 on the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?